If you have a cell phone, please put it on silent. And I know nobody has speakers anymore, but if you have a case, you put it on silent. Um, if you need to speak to the person next to you, please whisper because the type of guest is in the back of the room and we can hear exactly what he's saying. So just be quiet. If you have to talk to somebody, maybe go outside, talk to all the contacts. Um, either it's really me or you or whatever. If you're gonna come up and speak, please speak into the microphone because it's recorded and so when they, when they, uh, need to go through it and wanting, they can hear people in the back and hear what they're saying. So please, keep that to microphone and speak for her. Alright, thank you very much.
Six o'clock, call to order. Ms. Madin, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance, put on the flag of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, establishment of coram.
Rene Rodriguez.
Here.
Maria Reyes is absent. Ralph Duran.
Here.
Mayor Elea Garcia.
Here.
Victor Perez.
Here.
And Ivan Colombia Loz.
Here.
Mayor, we do have a coram.
Do we have any speakers?
Uh, Miriam Cruz. Ms. Cruz, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Um, good, good evening, City Council. Um, I distinguish staff of city, of the city of Socorro. I had two, I had two, two very quick things that I wanted to mention, maybe three. Uh, one, I wanted to thank the city, um, I was able to meet with some of the staff, um, this week, earlier this week, last week, last week, um, to go over what we might be able to do with Stockyard and all the speeding that's happening there. Um, and so I, I thanked them for that. And then the second thing I wanted to mention was, um, I know we're gonna be talking or maybe even passing the adoption of the, of the new ordinances of, um, for the city we're updating, which is great, um, but I also believe that we need to try to personalize them as much as we can to, to be able to do what we want with the city of Socorro. So if we want Socorro to be whatever idea we have that to be, we need to personalize these ordinances so that we make sure that, that we're able to enforce those when, when the time comes. Um, and so something that comes to mind, obviously, comes from planning and zoning, developers, anything like that, parks, stuff that we, we wanna make sure that we're gonna be able to enforce later. And the second thing, well, just wait till, um, the public hearing for the right of way on Alameda. Um, thank you.
Mayor, those were all our speakers.
Moving on to consent and agenda, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Maria Reyes is absent. Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Loz.
Yes.
Mr. Duran?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to please move up, item sixteen, twenty, and seventeen in this order on the agenda.
Second.
Hold on, hold on. Which one, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen?
Sixteen, twenty, and seventeen.
No.
Maria Reyes is absent. Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
I'm sorry, and I apologize. What was your order again?
The order is sixteen, twenty, and seventeen.
Sixteen, twenty, seventeen. Okay. Yes.
Ivan Colombia Loz.
I'm just gonna say, the reason why I said no is because if we swear in Mr. Nevadas, there's things in here that he doesn't know yet. And I don't think that, you know, it would be unfair and wise to just put him in the hot seat and have him vote on something that he's not privy to. That's the only reason why I said no. That's it. The only reason.
Item number sixteen, discussion and action to approve a resolution canvassing the returns of January election held November seventh, two thousand seventeen.
Motion to approve, number sixteen.
Second.
Or is it, does it require?
Yes. Okay, the results for District Representative Number One, Cesar Nevades, one hundred and sixty-three votes, Maria Reyes, one hundred and fifty-seven. District Representative Number Two, Ralph Duran, one hundred and thirty-three votes, Jesus Ruiz, one hundred and four votes. District Representative Number Three, Victor Perez, one hundred and seventy-nine votes, and Ruben Reyes, one hundred and sixty-one. Rene Rodriguez.
Yes.
Maria Reyes is absent. Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
Ivan Colombia Loz.
Yes.
Item number twenty, discussion and action to appoint Jorge Estrada to the Ethics Review Commission.
Motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Estrada. Um, he is a native Socorro resident, um, and I have to disclose, we've known each other for, forever and a day since about second grade, doesn't, doesn't mean that there's any kind of, uh, special favors, anything like that, business is business, and so I just wanted to make, put that out there before we.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Maria Reyes is absent. Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Loz.
Yes.
Item number seventeen, swearing and ceremony for incoming elected officials and commissioner. (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
I, Victor Perez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
Of the District Three representative.
Of the District Three representative.
Of the city of Socorro, Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
The laws of the United States and of the state.
The laws of the United States and of the state. So help me God.
(applause) (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
I, Ralph Duran, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of, to, District Two Representative of the city of Socorro, Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of the state. I, Ralph Duran, do solemnly swear or affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed or promised to contribute, any money or thing of value, or publ, or promised any public or employment for the giving or withholding of a vote at the election at which I was elected, or as a reward, to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be. So help me God.
(applause) (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
I, Caesar Nevades, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of District One Representative of the city of Socorro, Texas, and will to the best of my ability reserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of the state. I, Caesar Nevades, do solemnly swear and affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute, any money or thing of val- value, or promised any or public employment for the giving or, or withholding, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, of a vote, the election at which I was elected, or as a reward to secure my appointment or confirmation, whichever the case may be. So help me God.
(applause) (inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
I, Victor Perez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I have not directly.
That I have not directly.
Indirectly.
Or indirectly.
Paid.
Offered.
Offered.
Promised to pay.
Promised to pay.
Contributed.
Contributed.
Or promised to contribute.
Any money or thing of value.
Any money or thing of value.
Or promised any public or employment.
Or promising public or employment.
For the giving or withholding.
For, for the giving or withholding.
Of a vote.
Of a vote.
At the election.
At the election.
At which I was elected.
At which I was elected.
Or as a reward.
Or as a reward.
To secure.
To secure.
My appointment or confirmation.
Whichever the case may be.
Whichever the case may be.
So help me God. Thank you.
(applause) (inaudible) 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 I, Jorge Estrada, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of the Ethics Review Commission of the city of Socorro, Texas, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of the state. I, Jorge Estrada, do solemnly swear or affirm that I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, promised to pay, contributed, or promised to contribute, any money or thing of value, or promised any public or employment for the giving or withholding at the vote of the election at which I was elected, or as a reward, to secure my employment or confirmation, whichever the case may be. So help me God. (applause) (inaudible) 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 Thank you. (inaudible) 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 Item number seven, introduction, first reading, and calling for a public hearing of an ordinance amending section forty-two dash thirty-nine of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Socorro, Texas, to prohibit U-turns over, upon, or across certain medians except at intersections where the approaching vehicle is controlled by an official traffic control device, and authorizing the installation of no U-turn signs in the designated school drop-off zones.
Uh, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, this is just introduction, first read, uh, which we'll get at the next meeting. Uh, were there any specific questions you might have for this, uh, before we move it over to the next meeting?
Can, and I'm only joking, can we put spikes in the middle lane of Socorro Road? I'm just kidding. Spikes in the middle of Socorro Road, that, that turning.
We'll look into that, sir.
Ms. Yalavas?
Now, this is just to, this will only affect, um, it won't affect every street, it, it's only gonna affect whatever is named here, and those are the ones that are by the schools, correct?
That is, that is correct, ma'am.
Mayor. (inaudible)
No, it's an introduction. Introduction.
Oh, okay. Okay. (inaudible) (inaudible)
But answer your question, that is correct, ma'am. It's only from the, those sections of the street in front of the schools.
Ms. Yalavas?
Um, I've been asked by, um, several constituents that sometimes they don't know what we're talking about, and we're just talking because we can read it, and some of them don't know what's going on. Can we give a little bit of background of what we're speaking of, or what we're hearing today? Is that possible?
Sure thing. Um, essentially what happened is the city of Socorro was contacted by a couple representatives from the Socorro Independent School District, essentially requesting additional signage in front of their, uh, drop-off zones or drop-off areas, uh, along the streets there in front of their schools, uh, essentially prohibiting traffic from, uh, doing U-turns, uh, kind of in the middle of that area. Um, they saw, see it as a safety hazard, crossing guards, kids getting to school, multiple cars going back and forth, especially during the rush time, if you will. Uh, and, uh, essentially in the city of Socorro, uh, in order to authorize this, uh, we need an adoption of an ordinance in order to regulate, to provide signs that regulate traffic. Uh, so that's essentially why that's coming before you. Uh, it's for the city to go out there and place those signs in that area, in those, those areas, if you will, because it will be essentially in all of the, uh, school zones in, uh, in Socorro.
Thank you. Can we have a motion, please?
Motion to, uh, call for the hearing, and, uh, for introduction, first reading, and calling for a public hearing.
And if we're gonna do this, I think that we also need to be out there and, and do our due diligence and, and start tackling these issues because, um, I think it's a good idea, but I've, I've had issues in the past. Uh, my kids go to Sanchez and the other one goes to, uh, I'm kinda blank, Acapulco, and they all make U-turns. And if they're, the school officers don't do it, I mean, we, we have to send our police to, you know, uh, force these ordinance.
Well, I agree, but also the school district has police officers that are...
And, like I said, I drop my kids up, and the police officer's right there, and he doesn't do anything about it. And I brought this to attention to our chief, and that's what I'm saying, if we're gonna do this, we have to also put in an ordinance, and we have to go and do it. Because this is not just happening in the morning. So, I mean, I've seen multiple times that, you know, a child is gonna run, you know, across the street no matter what. So, I mean, it's just, I'm just saying is we gotta put a little bit of G in this.
Ms. Yalavas?
I just wanna remind that most people in the back can't hear, or they can hear very little. Please speak up clear enough so they can hear you.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Rene Rodriguez.
Aye.
Cesar Nevades.
Yes.
Ralph Duran.
Yes.
Victor Perez.
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Loz.
Yes.
Item number eight, public hearings of ordinance four-twenty-nine, an ordinance for the approval to amend municipal section six dash forty-eight, and adopt building and technical codes subject to the provisions amended or accepted, included, but not limited to the appendices. Six-twenty-two, public hearing is now open.
I'll just reiterate, oh, that was...
Item number eight.
Yes.
Yeah. Um, I just wanted to reiterate, um, that I feel like, as a group, as a city, we should all try to read these ordinances and really try to personalize them to what we want. I just wanted to reiterate that.
Thank you. (inaudible) 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 Six-twenty-three, public hearing is now closed. Item number nine, second reading and adoption of ordinance four-twenty-nine, an ordinance Item number nine, second reading and adoption of ordinance four twenty-nine, an ordinance for the approval to amend Munich Code Section six dash forty-eight, and adopt building and technical codes subject to the provisions amended or accepted, including but not limited to the appendices.
Motion to, for the, motion for the second reading and adoption of ordinance four twenty-nine?
Second.
Rene Rodriguez?
We're gonna have-
Do we have a presentation?
Do, do we have a presentation? For our staff? Pardon me trying to get my papers here in order. There is no actual formal presentation, just kinda give you a little insight on what's, what we're doing here. Currently, the city of Socorro is following the two thousand nine building codes from the International Code Council. That we're essentially now adopting the two thousand fifteen building codes with some exceptions, as we stated at the last meeting, as well as the two thousand, let's see here. A two thousand fourteen electrical code. That's the only different, one that's from a different date. But it's essentially bringing us up to our current, to current standards, if you will, with the current international building code standards is what we're trying to do with this.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lowes?
I just wanna let the public know, we're doing a lot of changes, obviously, and it's for the better of Socorro.
Yes. Item number eleven, second reading and adoption. Item number ten, public hearing of ordinance four thirty, an ordinance to establish safety zone on Alameda Avenue to prohibit parking on the public right-of-way, including but not limited to the shoulders, sidewalks, pavement, or other public driveways. Six twenty-five, public hearing is now open.
I wanted to ask whether there was gonna be a grace period from the time of the signs go up until enforcement. I think that, one, education would be key, because I mean, I can remember since I used to live down there near Alameda. I mean, cars were parking there all the time, people go fishing there, and they do all sorts of things. And they park all around Alameda. So the fact that they've been doing it for such a long time, I feel like there should be, one, education that this is gonna happen, not just here at the city council meeting, not just because it's on YouTube where people see it, but whether it's on Facebook, whether it's sending out flyers or something. And then, two, a grace period of, of, you know, the signs go up, but are we gonna, all of a sudden, even though someone's been used to parking there, now their car is towed and now they don't know where to get it, you know? I mean, they're probably like file police report like a missing car. So I was just wondering if there's gonna be a grace period, and if there will be a grace period for enforcement, about how long would city council believe that would be appropriate for? A week, a month, two weeks? Thank you.
Six twenty-seven, public hearing is now closed. Item number eleven, second reading and adoption of ordinance four thirty, an ordinance to establish a safety zone on Alameda Avenue to prohibit parking on the public right-of-way, including but not limited to the shoulders, sidewalk pavement, or other public driveways.
Motion for the second reading and adoption of ordinance four thirty?
Second.
Ms. Yelavos?
I'm sorry, your first name again? Marion. Marion brings a good point. I know signs are gonna be out there, but sometimes people just don't see them. So do we change, do we need to change the ordinance to add, do we need to add it, or is that something that we coordinate with chief?
Good evening, mayor and council. Just to answer your questions, ordinance four thirty is to establish a safety zone on Alameda. It's only a one thousand foot section of Alameda that we're trying to establish a safety zone. The reason for that is because there is a lot of overcrowding over the weekends. And right now, we don't have any regulations along this portion of land. Precisely today, when we were coming back from a meeting, there was an accident, a very big accident right here in this area. The purpose is because we're trying to establish signs on both sides of the street, so to allow the sheriff and the Socorro PD to enforce that nobody will be allowed to park on the sides of the road. People tend to park on the sides of the road, they cross the street, and it's very dangerous for pedestrians. This is a safety zone that we're, we're trying to establish, and the signs will be provided by TechDOT, because it's gonna, they're gonna be installed according to their standards. And it'll be effective immediately, as soon as you approve this ordinance, we will send a copy to TechDOT. And it depends on them, if they have the signs in stock, they will go ahead and put the signs up immediately.
Just a question on the backup, and maybe I missed it. What stretch of Alameda is it specifically?
That's approximately, and the reason for that is because if we look at some of the historical images, people park all the way to the edge of the industrial zone.
Okay.
Oh. Oh, yeah, sorry, there's a little rectangle in the corner. You, you can see on the historical images where traffic parks all the way to the industrial zone. That's why we're recommending a one thousand foot strip. And then it'll begin where the city limit starts, which is approximately right there.
That's a flea market parking, right?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Yelavos?
Why, why didn't we recommend some kind of crossing, crossway? Because, well, obviously, they're not gonna be able to park on that side, but people that walk? There's people that do walk to these places.
We don't recommend crossing just because of the speed limit that's established on this highway. It's a major highway. We don't recommend this highway to be used for pedestrian use. That's why we're restricting the shoulders. We're not, we're trying to not allow anybody to park on the sides at all. We have been negotiating with the owners of the flea markets, and they have been trying to do their best to provide parking within their properties. But unfortunately, we haven't been successful. For that reason, we're adding additional regulations.
But it just, it just doesn't make sense that we don't have, like, flashing lights, pedestrian up front turn on on the weekend, whenever these facilities are open for the flea market. It's only on the weekends, right?
Only on the weekends. They do have the sheriff to guide the people who are crossing the roadways, but they cannot issue tickets because there is no signalization.
So, so I guess the speed limit is the same, you know, for everybody going through there? There's no change, that's what I'm saying, there's no change?
Yes, ma'am, it's the same speed limit, fifty-five miles per hour, and there's been quite a few accidents. We saw one this afternoon, I took some pictures, but they're not real clear, that's why I didn't put them in the, in the monitor. But there was a pretty horrible accident today.
And, and because of that, I'm, I'm suggesting, can't we go back to TechDOT and see if there's a crossway that they can add, or? I know, I know, I know what you're saying, that you don't wanna promote, but it's gonna happen. People are still gonna walk to these places. They're gonna find places to park far away and walk.
But at that point, it becomes a comment upon them for their own safety, because all along the, let's see, on the, on the north side, you don't have any, hardly any residential areas until you get to maybe about Clint.
Which means they have a lot of parking after that.
But, but there's, the thing is that on the other, on the south side, again, there's all, it's all agricultural. So I don't know how feasible it would be to put a cross, a crosswalk.
Well, because cars will slow down only on the week, I guess you can program, or TechDOT can program it when it turns on, you know, the little flashing little light, pedestrian up ahead, or whatever it might say, and-
Yes, we, we did have a couple of meetings with TechDOT, and this is what they recommended.
Mr. Duran?
I think what you're talking about with the flashing lights is for a school. There's, there's no schools in that area, like Mr. Perez said, there's, it's all industrial on the north side. So either they're gonna have to accommodate the cars, or they'll be ticketed. So, and there, you know, to have a flashing light just doesn't make sense. I don't think they would do it, number one, because it's not a school zone. And number two, I don't, if people wanna park on the other side, if there's parking on this side, they will park on this side.
That's what I'm saying. They will, they will, people will find, if they can't find parking inside, they're gonna find, even if they have to walk two blocks or three blocks. They're gonna walk, and they're gonna cross that street. And that, that traffic is gonna be at, what's the traffic there? Fifty, forty-five?
Fifty-five.
Fifty, fifty-five.
Fifty-five. And they do park across the street.
They, they will find-
In the fields. I work right in front of that area, so-
And that's what I'm saying. Maybe we can talk to, I, I guess you're not saying that it's not a possibility, you're saying that's not what they recommended, and maybe we can go back. I'm saying, why don't we go back and ask?
Mr. Perez?
I'm thinking that when it comes to, because obviously, there has to be a traffic study first. And that's what this is based on, a traffic study. So then if that's the case, then more than likely, they determine that if they slow down the traffic in that area, it becomes a hazard, because it's, it's quite a stretch of fifty-five miles an hour now. Before, after that area, you go into the school zone. And I'm not sure if in the school zone, it goes down to forty-five, and then down to the, what is it, twenty-five or thirty miles an hour there. So before, when, and that's how TechDOT operates. They, there is a percentage of slowdown before you get to, to a school zone. So it's like, and I know this is gonna sound weird, but I'm making a comparison to stairs. When you build stairs, you have to have the same kind of steps all the way through, because if you miss, if it's not the same height, then there's a danger. The same kind of thing happens here. If you slow down traffic too much in a thoroughfare, it becomes more of a, of a traffic hazard than anything else, so.
And if, and if I may add, even if we do, since we're proposing to put no parking signs all along that street, and then we're also gonna put a flashing light pedestrian people, now we're encouraging people, well, you put up a sign for us for pedestrians to cross, now we're encouraging them to park again across the street, even though we're putting up signs that say, no parking.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah, and I was there at a, at a meeting with TechDOT as well. One of the things that they said is that they will not, that, that's a state highway, basically. There, we're not gonna slow traffic for no pedestrian. Pedestrian should not be walking, and that's their status. And unfortunately, you know, this comes from the big wigs in TechDOT. So when they said, and they already have their traffic studies, like Mr. Perez just told us is that there, systematically, that's how they have it. They're not going to change it. One of the things that I said is that we could put a tramway over, and they said, no. Like, just no. It's not gonna happen, because our study's not gonna let us. And it's, it's a, it's a state highway. I mean, they're, they're looking at this as even extending it wider in the future. So it's not going to happen. They don't want no traffic, and they're not definitely gonna slow it down. It's one of those things that even our staff, I know that our city manager's not here, but she's been in those, in those meetings, and she could attest to that, too.
Ms. Vinos?
And I appreciate what you're saying, and okay, so TechDOT, you know, has their say on this, but we still have to protect our citizens, and even though they don't, they don't know they're in danger, we still have to protect them. And I, I, I just believe that, number one, this was needed, and number two, maybe these, these two facilities should not exist, or, or they should provide, we should ask for more parking, a lot more parking than what they have right now. And, and it just doesn't make sense. Right now, we, we have to think about our, our citizens, even though they don't think about themselves.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lowes?
Yes. Item number twelve, public hearings of ordinance four thirty-one, an ordinance for the proposed rezoning of a portion of tracks one A, two A, one B, two C, block ten, Socorro Grant, eleven hundred block of North Loop, from C two, general commercial to R two, medium-density residential for a future development. Six thirty-eight, public hearing is now open. Six thirty-eight, public hearing is now closed. Item number thirteen, second reading and adoption of ordinance four thirty-one, an ordinance for the proposed rezoning of a portion of tracks one A, two A, one B, two C, block ten, Socorro Grant, eleven hundred block of North Loop, from C two, general commercial to R two, medium-density residential for a future development.
Motion to approve for discussion, please?
Second.
This case is a proposed zone change for essentially a portion of a tract, as you can see, it's highlighted in the yellow, that fronts along North Loop, that'll be, be receiving a zone change from C two, general commercial, to R two, which is medium-density residential. The purpose for this is to essentially develop an entrance into what would be a future development. This here is zone C two currently, but everything behind here is zone R two. So this will essentially be the entrance into the R two subdivision continuing at R two development to the rear. So that's essentially what this zone change is for, is basically kind of to make an entrance into the, the resident, the future proposed residential subdivision.
Mr. Perez?
At this time, and please excuse me, I have not finished with the process. Were there any respondents opposing the, the zone change, or the proposed zone change? That we know of?
Madam mayor, Mr. Perez, no sir, we don't have any record of anybody opposed, against it, no sir.
Ms. Yelavos?
And just for the record, the letters went out.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Do you know, if you really notice, and if you scroll up a little bit to the north, you can tell that it's- I think they're wrong. Can you zoom out, a little zoom out? That's wrong, that's incorrect. Okay, yeah, that's wrong, okay. It showed me on my map a different, a different subdivisions. You know, I, we're gonna, it's already commercial. One of the things is that I always say, it's in our North Loop. You know, I mean, we need commercial on our North Loop, on our Horizon Boulevard, on our Waco Tanks, on Alameda, on our Socorro. Because our arteries, you know, it's already, from my logic and my perspective, it's just, you know what, just leave it as art, as, as a commercial. I mean, you can still make the road, because you're still gonna make the road. You know? That's the way I see it. I mean, I think that we should just leave it as is, you know? And that's my opinion, that's my recommendation.
Ms. Yelavos?
Can you show us where the, where the commercial outline is?
I'm gonna have to draw it real quick for you.
I think the technical term is a muscle maker.
Yeah.
I haven't drawn it, either.
It's in your, it's part of your backup, it should be there.
It is? No. No. We do not have a backup on that.
The red, the red outline is the existing commercial zone.
So my, my, my question with this is, Mr. Rodriguez, I believe they are in need of an opening, if we leave it like this.
And-
Mr. Perez?
And it wouldn't be any different than the current development off of new Waco Tanks rules? Because you have a combination of, of commercial and residential.
Oh, no, I was just, I was looking at the difference, like I said, on my map, it gave me a difference. It gave me a different area, which is this one. And it's, and it's giving it to me right off, you know, Peter Piper and all that, like. I said what I said.
Okay.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
Ivan Colombia-Lowes?
Yes. Item number fourteen, public hearing of ordinance three ninety-seven, amendment three, to decrease fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget in the amount of one hundred forty-four thousand thirty-one with sixty cents. Six forty-four, public hearing is now open. Six forty-five, public hearing is now closed. Item number fifteen, second reading and adoption of ordinance three ninety-seven, amendment three, to decrease fiscal year two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget in the amount of one hundred forty-four thousand thirty-one with sixty cents.
Motion to reduce the two thousand sixteen-seventeen budget by the amount of one hundred forty-four thousand thirty-one dollars with sixty cents?
Mr. Rodriguez?
I'll second Mr. Perez, but could you amend it? Because what I was gonna say is that I was gonna approve it, but I also want for all of us to get an email with, with the last three years of actuals, because we never get it. You know, we always do our, our, our budgets, and it's one of the things that we're decreasing and increasing all the time. So we don't really know actually how much our budget was for the end of the year. So therefore, you know, we make assumptions about next year's budget, and yet we don't see it until the very end of the following year. And I don't think that that is right for us when we're making decisions on budgetary for the following fiscal year. So if we don't know, we're being constrained to, this is possibly what we're going to spend. But when it comes to it, we're spending either more or less, and we don't have the actuals to see if we're actually doing our due diligence and budgeting correctly for the future. So what I'm saying is, we need these, I would like these to be emailed to us, and then we can go and see, and, and, and actually have a better understanding of forecasting our future budgets the right way.
So we're looking at the, the year-end actuals for the fiscal year?
The actuals, because we don't have them, and I've never received them. So that's one of the things that I want. I want three to four years of actuals versus our budget that we've proposed as well.
So then I'll go ahead and amend my motion to include the approval plus, um, three years? Three years of-
Actuals?
Actual, well, the ending expenditures for the fiscal year? Which, that's what, that's what we, the actual expenditures.
Actuals.
So you're approving the ordinance, though, as written?
Yes, yes.
Requested that?
We're just adding the extra information for us.
That's all. Is that doable, Mr. Casciano?
Let, let me respond by saying you have the audited financial statements for those fiscal years, which includes a budget-to-actual comparison in it, in the supplemental information on those. And that's audited. What I would give you would be-
The same thing, of course.
It, it'd be in a different formatting, probably, an Excel spreadsheet, rather than as a, a, a financial statement that, that you have. Now, I could find those and, and, and scan those and give those to you.
And that's what we want.
Okay, all right.
That's it.
Ms. Yelavos?
For educational purposes, so, Mr. Casciano, so this money goes back into the general fund? What, what does it do?
What, what, the, the one hundred and forty-four thousand?
Yes.
Yes, it stays in the, the maintenance and operations.
Thank you.
Do we have a second? Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia-Lowes?
Yes. Item number eighteen, discussion and action on appointing a new mayor pro temp pursuant to Section three point oh three of the city charter.
I would like to propose, mayor, mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Would like to propose if, Mr. Perez? Would you like to take the responsibility this year?
Okay.
So that would be-
So that would be my motion.
Well, it doesn't happen very often. The one time that I got to do that, a few years ago, the mayor came in like two minutes before the meeting. So I never, I never got to do it, so I did really, I mean...
Well, here's your chance.
All right, I appreciate that, thank you.
Second. Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
You know, I'm going to abstain on this, I'm still the one who abstains.
And Ivan Colombia Loz?
Yes.
Item number nineteen, discussion and action to approve waiving of associated fees on the East Lake Valley subdivision requested access points.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, um, I would like to, um, I would like to approve, uh, the waiving of the associated fees with East Lake Valley subdivision. Um, the reason why is because we were in those mea- I was in one of those meetings. And, um, and, uh, it was the developer of the city and the constituency. So, they all came into a consensus as to what would be beneficial for the city, the constituents, and the developer. Um, we, we said that we will present this, uh, to council, because we, I can't, and none of the city can say, "Yes, we are gonna do this." Um, but everybody, all three, which is the developer of the city, uh, uh, staff, and the con- and the residents, agreed that this would be beneficial for all three of you. Um, I think that this is one of the things that, they're landlocked, this is something that it'll free up, uh, these individuals. Um, they're also willing to give a portion of their ri- uh, more right away to the street, the city can, uh, in the future, de- develop, uh, exactly, in, in place, so that they can get the services that they desperately need. Um, right, currently, right now, these individuals have to wait for emergencies, um, at, at, at the end of the road. And for some of these constituencies, that's a quarter of a mile away. I mean, so, none of the services will get to them because of this. This will help them get the services that they desperately need.
Ms. Yellos?
Oh.
Second.
Go ahead.
Second.
Um, I, I'm confused. I have two papers here. What is the total amount that we're waiving for educational purposes, number one? Number two, for educational purposes, can we have, um, um, Mr. Escobar come up here and, and, and notify us what exactly, um, why he's asking for the waiver? I know he said it many times, but, um...
Mayor?
There's been...
Mr. Escobar?
We would have to suspend the rules.
Suspend the rules.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Mr. Escobar?
One minute.
We have to suspend the rule. Make a motion to suspend the rules, so we can allow, uh, Mr. Escobar to speak on this side.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Loz?
Yes.
Mr. Escobar?
Okay, now, can I hear the question again?
I, I, I know you've said it several times, but I don't know if there's been any changes. Um, we, we know you've been very generous and, and with, with the constituents and with the city. Will you please, um, notify us again of what ex- why we're waiving the fees for, for, um...
Okay.
This development?
What, what happened is, uh, you know, the people were landlocked, and of course, they wanted to get service and access. I met every code, every requirement of the code. I did not have to do it. When I met with them, I was willing to give them one access. The city recommended a second access, and then the neighbors requested a third access, which I understand will benefit them more. Uh, the only thing I'm requesting, what I did, so you understand, is the second access that the city is recommending, we're keeping open, because we're trying to acquire another piece of property. So if we acquire that piece of property, that won't cost anything to the city. We'll actually end up with three or four more entrances to the property, so there'll be more access. The utilities will be closer to everybody. That third entrance that the residents requested, of course, impacts us financially, 'cause we lose another lot. So, we did a takeoff, I, I hired the contractor. What we're gonna do is, we're gonna open that third entrance, we're gonna extend the utility, we're gonna put valves, water valves, sewer, everything to the edge of the property. So when the city extends those roads, they don't have to destroy any paving or anything else, they just go to the valve, open up, hook up, you're almost... So now, this third entrance cost me twenty-six thousand five hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents in work, plus the twenty-nine thousand dollars that we lose for one lot. So the total, you're approving in credit, not, you're not giving me any money. I have to pay still a bunch of money to, to the city in fees. So I'm gonna have a credit of fifty-five thousand five forty-nine fifty-four, is what I'm requesting. And the city will be guaranteed, right now, two entrances with utilities, paved all the way to the edge of the property of the neighbors, and I'm conserving the third entrance to see if we can acquire the, that other property. Uh, I will tell you that, uh, that the city worked very hard to get us and the neighbors together, and, uh, we finally agreed, so everybody's happy, and I think the city's doing a good job in, in deciding well for the future of that area.
I, can we ask, what i- what is this amount, one hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five?
Excuse me?
I, I have a subdivision that was part of the packet, and I, I was, so all we're waiving is five, fifty-five thousand five hundred and forty-nine, fifty-four. That's it.
That's it, not the other one.
What is this?
The other one is actually a total permit cost for, uh, the development.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, and we have some speakers for this side of, Hector Valencia?
Mayor, at some point, I'd like, I would ask Council to adj- just address the side of executive session, so we can return it. I don't know if we're prepared for that, or if we see public comment, or...
Would you like the comments now, or after executive?
You wanna hear the comments now, then we can, we're gonna go to executive and hear it, then we should...
Do we have a motion to go into executive?
Motion to go into executive.
Second.
To consult, uh, our city attorney.
Second.
Rene Rodriguez?
Aye.
Cesar Nevares?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Victor Perez?
Aye.
And Ivan Colombia Loz?
Yes.
Six fifty-seven, we are now going into executive session.